Good evening, welcome to the April eighth, 2014 Board of Selectmen meeting. We've got a short agenda tonight, but each one of these issues is rather long. So it may go on for awhile. First of all, let's look at the minutes of the last meeting, March eleventh meeting.
Make a motion to approve March eleventh minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I will abstain, I wasn't here.
Alright, new business. A consideration municipal budget for approval. And I will ask Joe once again to lead this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
I'm trying to think how you want to do this. Do you want to have any discussion over items that we talked about last night? That we had some questions on?
To get clarification before, yeah.
Before we?
Because we had a couple of things.
Right. And I think one of those was the position for videographer full-time. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you received a response today from attorney. On whether or not he can consider this a salary position and as we talked about last night, probably skirting the line on that one.
Right. I think they came to a resolution that they were better off to go with temp instead of hiring.
No, we were talking about the technology.
No, sorry.
You're talking about the rub position.
Wrong subject, and we moved on to another one.
Right. So that's one of the issues we had. So, I mean, we got a budget line of $35,000 there. And the question is, you break that, and that includes benefits in that line. Is that right?
No.
Not just salary, like straight salary, no benefits.
That's right.
Okay. So if you break that down, an hourly rate, I think it was like sixteen eighty-two an hour.
Right.
Is that right? So, where do people want to go?
Well, there's two, technically thirty-two and forty hours is full-time, correct? Ending over thirty-two hours is full-time.
Correct.
So what we want to do is figure out how many of those full-time hours, correct?
Well, I mean, I think the question is, do you need someone forty hours a week?
And should it be based towards a salary, or should it be based towards hourly?
Well, you can't do, we got the opinion from the attorney today that you can't do a salary. It's an hourly rate. At thirty-two hours, that would be twenty-eight thousand a year versus thirty-five, if my math is correct.
I'm sorry, what was that, Joe?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand for thirty-two hours?
Yep. Yep. We saw the description in an email about everything that needs to be done. I mean, as I said last night, I'm in the opinion that I like to start out slowly. Start out at thirty-two hours and see where that goes. When I think about how many meetings are taped in that process, I'm not sure.
You don't really know how long a meeting's gonna last.
Right. You know, now you had the planning board had all this Frey Island stuff that's over with and done with. Yep, so you got Planning Board, you got Selectmen, you got Budget Finance. Are there other committees?
Yeah.
Any town committee?
Which one?
Any town.
Any town committee?
All of them.
Right.
Yeah. The electrification, there's a lot of other.
Special committee, you know, so we can.
There's more, there's more meetings every year. So I mean, year over year, we increase the amount of meetings that we have by substantial amounts.
Conservation.
It's not just the same every year. And Planning Board has had about the same amount of meetings each year, they just have different issues.
So, I definitely wouldn't want to under, you know, put it, put a figure on it that would be under budget.
Right.
So I would steer more towards the amount that's been, been put forth.
No matter which way we go, there has to be an understanding, it's forty hours a week, no overtime, unless approved, and the work stops. Right? I mean, it doesn't matter what I think the requests are, or what the demand is, that's where we are, right? I mean, it's a, if it's an hourly wage with an hourly expectation, you know, it's not work fifty hours this week and thirty hours next week if that's the deal. I mean, we can't have that.
Can't be compromised.
So it'll have to be an explanation, the stuff will have to wait.
That's your point?
Thanks.
So, yeah. So whichever way we go, I think that's gotta be understood.
I'm leaning toward the forty hours. It seems to make more sense, more realistic. And, you know, I just, I'm just not comfortable doubling the budget. I just.
And it is plus, right?
Hmm?
It's actually a little more than double it.
Yeah.
But I heard throughout time that the person that we have doing it now still works and definitely paid. Still, you know, still completes his or her task and just does it for the goodness of the town, which is great, but.
I'm not looking to shortchange anyone here, I'm just thinking of.
But also a step up.
Yeah, it's a, it's a huge step for me.
So now it's sixteen-seventh, or was, you know, we'd look to go to say twenty-eight instead of the thirty-five that's put forth.
Dominic, what are you contracted in the hours now with the sixteen?
For how many hours do you get a week?
Yeah.
Twenty, but I usually put in more than.
Right, nope.
That's what happens, is you say it's double the pay, but really it's double the work, I just get half the pay.
I think you can continue. What do people want to do?
I, I guess the thing that's kind of awkward here for me is just because we're used to dealing, like, not directly with you on, we're dealing with a position and not a person.
Right, and we can't look at it as a person.
Right, and that, that's where it's, this is awkward, because anything else, it'd be like salaries, or it'd be management or something else, do you know what I mean? That's, that's the thing, it's.
You got the email from Nancy, right? With ninety thousand dollars gross operating budget over last year.
Sorry, I didn't see five. It makes sense, Joe, if we, could we raise this if it need be? It started at thirty-two. Can we raise it? You're showing that this debt is not doing the job.
Well, you still need, well, you have to have a budget number.
You have to have a number.
Right, so if you say it's twenty-eight thousand thirty-two hours, if you go over that, it's gonna show a deficit in that line. Now whether or not there's leeway in that line, in that entire technology department budget, I don't know.
When they came up with the forty hours, did they look at it and analyze the job and came to a conclusion that there is forty hours put in, or forty, or more than forty hours put in each week? Is how you came up with being a forty-hour figure instead of a thirty-two hour figure?
It came out of technology.
Is there more than forty hours worth of work that can be done?
It's up to, you have to decide whether or not, you know, you think this is the right way to go, and.
I do, I do believe that is the right way to go, and I think that the sixteen-seven and you say, oh, well, I don't feel right doubling it, but only reason why it's doubled is because it hadn't increased over the last handful of years as the hours increased. So in all essence, yes, the figure has doubled, but the, the job itself has been thirty-five to forty for the last couple of years.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I don't know. You know, a lot of this is archiving stuff. You know, is that such a pressing need that you need to have it done immediately?
Nope. But is there hours left over from other weeks that you could use to do the filing, to do, you know, the archiving? Is there one week out of the month that you only work twenty, twenty-five hours, and that's the week that you would do your filing, or do your archiving, or do, not do your monthly catch-up?
But say you got a week that's only got like one meeting. I honestly did a total brain freeze last night, thought forty hours for the whole month, and went, wow, I was not with it last night. Something we can consider too is get him up to thirty-two hours and then take a look at it again, and then see as far as prioritizing what needs to be done. You know what I mean? Like saying no to instant videos or whatever, if it's not within, within the timeframe, the time schedule, or the forty hours, if he does, you know, there is the, the work there.
I would just, if I was to say forty hours, let's go with the thirty-five that they put forth, I would want to know that the person doing it is not working forty hours just because he can't, or she can't.
I look at.
I would want them to be either honest with their boss, or their boss is watching them enough to know that, okay, this is the amount that that person needed. But I, me personally, I want to go with the amount that's put forth, because I feel that's fair, because I do feel that the person in that function is working closer to forty than he is, or she is working for thirty-five.
You're looking at a twenty-two thousand dollar increase in the technology line, granted nineteen thousand over eighteen-three is coming out of this, out of this position. But there are other areas that are increased.
Right. Some upgrades for a thousand that's increasing, two thousand for broadcasting expenses.
What are video broadcasting expenses? Why are those going up?
Live streaming, it's the annual.
So how did that go up, two thousand dollars? That's twenty percent increase.
That's what it costs annually for live streaming, and it just went into effect last year, so now it has to be paid for every year.
Cost to, for licensing?
That's what I, only thing I can assume, man.
It's a licensing cost, or what is it?
It, it's for the service itself, yeah. I, I guess you would consider licensing. You use their servers, you use an external server for faster bandwidth.
Alright. Alright, you know, I'm not hearing solid positions one way or the other.
I'll go down and ask for it.
Yeah, I mean, how many want to keep it at forty hours, and what's in the budget? How many want to go to thirty-two hours? You know, how many want to come up with a different number? You know, I'm trying to move this along here.
Should we come back to this?
Yep, we can come back to it. Nathan, did you investigate the temp workers?
Yes, I did. The temp service that we talked to, that is, the seventeen, we change an hour, that is inclusive of everything. When they get done working for us, we're done with them, there's no.
No unemployment.
No unemployment, no liabilities, no nothing. And we can have them up, you gotta give them a four-hour a day, up to four hours a day, is mandated. If we work them two weeks and decide we don't, it's not working, we stop the program, press on.
And what do we know about their abilities?
We'll get a list of people that we can interview after they do their screening. And they'll do the drug testing, background check, driver's license check, all we have to do is add them to our vehicle insurance as a driver, and that's all we're liable for.
What about the liability piece?
Oh, the liability piece, we have to put, we have to put us on them for a second insurer, I believe it is, just on a liability insurance.
Are they gonna give you a consistent person?
I asked that, if they were gonna be, if we set up with two people, we would have them until we're done with them. If we don't like the two that come, we can ask for another two. But once we've decided we want them, that's the people we will have for the length of the program.
Where's the company that you're looking towards, based out of?
Out of Portland.
So would they be Portland residents, or would they try and maneuver to be closer to?
I didn't ask that.
Being that, they're probably gonna pay their person eight, ten dollars an hour, or something to that effect. And you'd hate to see that person after two weeks, you put some solid training into them, and them to say, it just isn't working, I'm, you know, they're paying me, say, ten dollars an hour, I'm making four hundred dollars, I bring home three-ten, I pay eighty dollars, sixty dollars in gas, I bring home two-fifty, I'm better off to just find a temp job in Portland.
That is correct.
Than to hit a temp job.
That is one of my concerns with this, and that was one of the biggest concerns I had when going to the temp agency, is the level of pay that the temp is giving, and the quality of person you're gonna get from that, or the, or the dependability you're gonna get from that.
One thing that you can always do, and I, I hate to do, but I have in the past, is that if you do find that great person, and you do not feel that they're paid up to speed, that you can pay them a little extra yourself, or you instruct the labor service to pay them a little more, and they may end up charging you a little bit more. I mean, I'm not saying that's what I recommend, but it's something that you could maneuver around to not lose a good person. I know it's a twelve-month period, but.
I think you'd be more likely, if you had somebody that you really liked, and they were having trouble, I would more likely recommend that you put them on as a town employee, drive that way. Because we're gonna have a budgeted number of what it's gonna cost us per hour for those many weeks.
Did you want to talk to the temp service that you use, because a lot of times they, it is a necessity to put in or pay them a certain amount of hours before you recruit their individual? They want you to.
They want a certain minimum.
They want that individual to be billed out for, say, two-hundred hours.
Correct.
Before you can take them on as a, as an employee.
Okay.
It's just one thing that you want, and that's something that before you sign, you want to have that in writing, because it is, it's key. I mean, you may either lose a staff member and want to replace them with him, with that person, and you're not able to, because it's sixteen weeks worth of work that you would need with, through the temp service.
Correct.
But it's always a good option, and it's a good way to go about it in the front end, before you sign.
Um, so based on that information, if we kept the budget line as it was, it would probably cut you down to twelve weeks, or eleven and a half weeks total, if we didn't increase the budget line.
If you didn't increase the budget line, that is correct, yes. Yes, I think the increase is three thousand, three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
Per person?
No, that's for the two of them, overall. I had fifteen dollars an hour, which would have been for thirteen weeks, it was in fifteen thousand six hundred, and that eighteen dollars an hour brings you up to eighteen thousand seven twenty.
But we would save money in other areas?
I know.
No, I'm looking at Nancy now. We had social security figured in on that.
We would possibly save money in other areas.
Yeah. It's almost a wash, honestly, it's not gonna amount to that much money.
The savings.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to figure, right? I mean, there's definitely an increase to those.
It's a few hundred dollars at best.
That we would save, yeah, with the search. We have, we would have had no other expenses other than social security and, and it's a match for Medicare.
But you don't have an issue of, when their time's done, they're done.
Yeah, right, and I, I get that.
You don't have, you don't have any unemployment issues, or anything to that effect. One thing I didn't realize, the town is, pays their own unemployment, I didn't realize that.
Workers' comp issues either, they're all insured through the temp agency for workers' comp.
They manage them, they do.
Yep.
You do have to oversee them.
Correct.
Are there other issues I'm missing that we discussed last night?
We had the.
The what?
Rattlers and.
Yeah, you got the letter today from Raymond Waterways.
We got Raymond Waterways, yeah.
So that's a flat funding.
Cemetery issue, you have a memo about that, too?
Right.
Yeah, but without a policy, I don't know that we're in a position to change that, are we?
Oh, sure.
Talking about fees?
Fees?
For fees, yeah, I guess we could.
I mean, I kind of like Gray's, honestly. You got the memo from Louise. And you look at the gloss, and they're getting six hundred dollars a plot. And right now, we're getting three hundred. Is anyone willing to move on this? I am.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
Those are one-time purchases, is there a one-time, when the time comes and the hole needs to be dug, and this and that, and that's an extra fee, correct?
Oh, yeah. If I may, I think that, looking at other towns and what they're charging, we're in the ballpark, with the exception of Gray, and quite frankly, as I said in my memo, Gray's told me the reason that it's so expensive for non-residents is they don't want non-residents being buried in their cemeteries. But keep in mind that we have all types of people in Raymond that will want to be buying plots, and I would hate to think that there are families in Raymond that couldn't afford to buy one.
I mean.
Very good point, but.
But, I mean, when you say we're in the ballpark, we're a hundred dollars less than everybody else, we're in the low end of the scale.
It's a good place to die.
The other thing, this is part of the fee schedule, it really doesn't have anything to do with the budget.
Except for law.
That's true.
I mean, the money, Nancy told me today, the money goes into a fund, it doesn't go into the. Cemetery trust funds, that's right. It doesn't go into the undesigned native surplus.
Right, it goes into the trust fund.
So it's not gonna affect our revenues on the backside?
So it doesn't really have any budget impact, so we shouldn't be dealing with it right now.
That's correct.
I can take that one.
Put that away. I just gotta tell you that where I'm at right now is I'm uncomfortable with the total budget. I just, you got a ninety thousand dollar increase, and I'm just not.
Overlooked.
Ready to pass along that kind of a tax increase. So I, I want to look at areas we can cut.
Which ones stand out?
If you took all the salaries, Nancy, what's your total number? Your total increase in salaries?
The increase in salaries?
You know, off topic.
No, I don't.
I mean, there's some, there's some big increases in, in, you know, social security, retirement, you start looking at those, and they're a huge chunk of change, but that's, some of it, it is what it is, but like social security, it depends what you do with all these new positions.
So Joe, you're talking about a ninety thousand dollar increase to gross revenue, plus we have less in, I mean, ninety thousand gross budget.
Yeah, on your operating.
On the operating side, and then we have a, we have a decrease in revenue because of the.
A one-time sale last year.
Well, there was one-time sale last year, plus we're losing on a, on a line item. We're going from one, right.
You lose some revenue sharing?
We're, revenue sharing goes from one ninety-five down to one oh eight. So, you know, that's a quick eighty-eight.
Yeah.
We didn't get the one ninety-five, obviously, but that's what we have as a budget line.
That ninety on the other end is that with the ten that we had taken off the operating wheel?
Yeah, that's, that's subtracting everything we took off last night, adding in some revenue, it's still ninety. And how do, how do people feel about the ninety? Are they comfortable with that?
The only reason why I would say I was more comfortable than not is that we, you know, we've gone through, you know, individually as well as as a group, it seemed like we had, we, you know, we cut a handful of things. Is there more to be cut? Very well could be, so I guess that's at the point where we need to microanalyze each individual and, and either decrease that ninety, or feel better, feel more comfortable with, with the increase.
Joe?
You like?
If we had tracked as we have in years past, our LD-one increase for a spending increase, would have come in somewhere around thirty-five thousand dollars, that's what we've been tracking the last few years, right? So we probably would have spent to that amount-ish, we would have come close to that, and we would have been LD-one compliant. So if thirty-five thousand comes off the ninety, then the gross is closer to fifty-five. And if you're looking at fifty-five thousand as an increase, when we've delivered a flat municipal budget for seven years, divide fifty-five by seven, it's a negligible, negligible percentage, so I'm pretty comfortable with this as a whole, to ask the voters themselves. You know, town meeting, they can always lower items, or they can, they can reverse them, but, but I, I see it as a, you know, over, over an LD-one theme, which we've been running on, it's a fifty-five thousand dollar increase, before we get into the one-times or any of the bond stuff, or, or that, but, so I'm comfortable with that, personally.
I mean, one way of looking at it is saying you lost eighty-eight thousand dollars of revenue sharing, and there's your ninety thousand.
Quickly.
Yeah, you can look at it that way.
Right.
Because you would have gotten that, wouldn't you?
We'd, we'd be looking at an LD-one override because of that. We'd, we'd be looking at an LD one override because of that, no matter what. Or I, I think we would be, and it's a matter of at what level do we ask for the override, at what are we comfortable with? I didn't find anything as we went through the budget. You know, I, you know, I'm of the opinion Raymond Rattlers didn't get in touch with us, they're sixteen hundred bucks unless by law we have to give it to them. And see whether or not they come and make a presentation next year.
I mean, you can hold on to that money, you don't have to give it to them.
Right.
But it's been the tradition for how long? As long as I've been in the town.
But we've gotten, you know.
Unfortunately, it's, it's a good group, not necessarily of people, I'm not saying that, but it's a good organization. And I think that it's, it helps the gas stations in our town to be able to, you know, make sure that the trails are groomed and up to par. And there is a, a small, but a, a group of individuals that put a lot of work into it. And that sixteen hundred dollars will be taken out of their own pocket. Maybe it should be because they didn't get off the butt and, and at least present the information to us.
And, and Lonnie, I, I agree with that, and I think they're a great organization, but this board also sat here a few years ago and Raymond read the extended day program, didn't get their request in, and we cut them because they didn't take the time to come present to us. And they provided a great service for our children, and this was a stipend for scholarships for that, so.
But I personally went and tried to get ahold of Raymond Rattlers itself.
And, so I, I don't know, I mean, I.
But those, those snowmobile owners pay and exercise tax. And they, all we're doing is giving it back to them. We're not giving them any more than they pay in. Like for the last thirty, maybe even forty years, I don't know. That's the way it's been done.
I would have felt the same way if Raymond Waterways hadn't gotten in touch with us today. Right? You know, they made it by, by what, twelve hours, five hours? I would have made the same argument for them because they didn't take the time to come when we asked them to. I mean, if you, if you're gonna try to, you know, look at, look at some cuts. You make cuts based on, based on energy and effort, I think first, before you take away from, from folks who are trying to do things. That are, that are here.
I mean, I just think we're giving back the, the snowmobiles, their money. That's the way I look at it. I'm not willing to say, no, you can't have it. Alright, so I guess the one outstanding issue we have before we get into the warrants is this whole video technology thing. I kinda like to wrap it up, I think people feel one way or the other. You know, I'm, I'm good at thirty-two hours and twenty-eight thousand.
I'm good at forty hours and thirty-five.
Okay. About this?
The forty hours is in the fifty-five thousand.
The thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand.
No.
The money, the fifty-five I just talked about.
Yeah.
Yep.
Over LD one.
Yes.
Okay.
Sam, where are you at?
I lean toward forty hours, however. Yes, I lean toward forty hours.
What are you two?
Your time.
I get.
I said by piece, I think the fifty, I think the ninety thousand is fine, the way it is, the way we talked about it yesterday.
So you're good with the thirty-five thousand?
I'm good with the, I'm good with the forty hours.
Forty hours.
Alright, so we move along.
I'm good.
Alright, so I guess we'll just go through each item in the warrant and vote yes or no, right? Article one. Yep, sure, yep, absolutely. You got your timer?
I have, yes.
Okay.
I have taken a vote. Charles Levitt, fourteen Levitt Road, Raymond, Maine. In the past, it could be described as, this, the new budget as proposed has now been raised to the level of what I'll call grand lasceny. In years past, it could have been described as petty theft, theft by deception, or pickpocketing. But this year. It steals almost a half a million dollars from our rainy day audit-driven fund balance. Pirates millions of dollars to projects that have not been sought after by the community. Ponzi schemes, the two million dollar road bond, because we've pushed the principal payment now down another year down the road. And locks in future debt for the taxpayer-funded balloon payments in two or three years. I think there's also a problem with the idea that Raymond's been flat funded over the last few years, that's just a, that's an absurdity. I've already shown in other meetings that this operational budget's gone up significantly over the past five or six years. Although these types of bonds, which we've seen are traditionally voted on by the entire community, this Enron Bernie Madoff Board.
You wanna keep your comments?
This is to the total, to the total.
I don't wanna hear personal attacks.
This isn't a personal attack, I didn't use anyone's name.
Comments on the budget.
You're taking into my time, Enron Bernie Madoff Board, taxes spend, Republicans and bureaucrats are maneuvering for a town meeting.
Okay, then I will refrain from that. Stick to the budget comments.
So we're maneuvering for a town meeting-only vote. Uh, excuse, oh, and by the way, I'm gonna stop my time, I got a minute and sixteen. Who is the chair? Let me ask that. Who's the chair right now? Am I addressing the parliamentarian or am I addressing the chair?
Designated me the chair of the budget, so I am running the meeting right now.
Okay, I didn't see that designation, so let me reset my time, if you will.
No, you don't, you're not resetting your time, you have one minute.
Okay, so, uh, the attendance at the town meeting, we know will be about eighty people, those who will be rewarded by coming to the meeting of the four thousand registered voters, so we know this is an attempt to try to hoodwink the taxpayers who are about to be fleeced. The BOF and the BOSS and the Budget Finance Committee should continue its deception and manipulations. It's the best way to ensure a much greater turnout at the town meeting by Raymond voters accustomed to gimmicks, fraud, and used car salesmanship. Thank you.
You got it. Any other comments from the public? Bob?
Teresa. Do you wanna?
Robert Goslin, eleven Eagles Bureau. Uh, in a, in a letter issued by Lori Forbes at the time that they were proposing to add a full-time, at that point, salary position, their recommendation or her recommendation was to have a salary range of thirty-two to thirty-five thousand, which the high end of that was submitted for your consideration. Secondly, if you're concerned about the budget being at where it's at right now, ninety thousand over, do we really need two additional temp people to help in public works we've done without it in the past? And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything to me on that? It's up to you, it was presented to you guys, if you don't wanna go through with it, that's, that's fine, we have gotten by without it in the past. The beautification committee came to me with a problem, and that was the solution that I had.
I think one of the, one of the issues we have is that we have increased the road budget. You know, you have this bond that you're gonna work on the roads with, you have, we increased from two hundred and forty to two hundred and seventy-five thousand in maintenance on the roads. I think you're gonna need extra personnel to get everything done that you wanna get done.
We're falling behind on a lot of stuff with the sign maintenance and brush cutting and small complaints 'cause the guys are on the, on the construction in the summer trying to get ahead of the paving crew, so.
Can we keep the comments down, the audience, please? Trying to run a meeting? Alright. Any, um. Seeing no further comments, we're gonna just go right down through the articles. Okay, Article one, all set on that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Article two. This is a land use ordinance. I assume this has been run through the planning board and the CEO and all that, right?
We've already had it go through the board and we've recommended it.
Article three.
Article three.
Article three is also.
Commercial district, parking.
What's weird is that you see Article twelve, Article ten.
It's on like the second page.
It's on the second page?
Which one are you looking for, Article three?
Yeah, I got Article three. No, is Article four the district regulation?
Yes.
No, that's.
Yes, it is, we're doing it says.
I know, but that's not Article four in the warrant, that's Article four in the land use regulations. Right?
Right.
District, right?
Article three, and that's part of Article three, even though it says Article four, Article nine.
I see Article five, but I still don't see Article four.
Right above Article five.
I see Article ten.
Same page right above it, Joe.
This is Article five, right?
Article four is on the opposite page.
Fourteen.
Oh, there it is, okay, yeah, that's the residential growth management, right? Article five is authority and classification of site plan. Those are all set, I assume?
Yep.
Article six is the appeals procedure and site plan review.
Good.
Article seven, land use standards and definitions. Article eight, parking areas and definitions. We need to vote on each one of these separately.
I think we've already voted in some of them.
Okay, so those have all been voted on and.
The only ones that you're missing are starting at Article nine.
Article nine, minimum standards?
Nope, but for the open space fund one.
Okay. So we, the selectmen voted to, to approve all those previous articles, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay. Article nine, town will vote to appropriate fifteen thousand from the open space fund to donate to the Boy Scouts Pine Tree Council for the purchase of a thirty-acre parcel. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Uh, Mr. Budget Finance, will you please keep your comments to yourself?
I'm here as a private citizen.
No, you're, you're a member of the, you always say you're an elected official, and you're acting like a bore.
Excuse me, you're not a bore, Mr. Chairman?
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
I'm here running the meeting.
And run the meeting.
I am, and running the meeting means keeping the audience in check. No, it wasn't.
You called him a bore.
That's correct.
That's a personal attack.
No, it is not.
Yes, it is.
He's sitting there.
I knows it when I see it.
Yeah.
Alright, let's cut this out.
He's sitting there.
No.
He's making comments.
He's gonna bore the audience.
Okay, Article ten. Appropriate thirty thousand from the open space fund, an additional twenty thousand from the timber harvest funds, for a total of fifty thousand towards the purchase of three hundred and forty-seven acres along Kineska Route, including Pismire Mountain. And I won't read the rest. All those in favor? Opposed? No recommendation? Raise your hand. And I will abstain. Article eleven is reserved. Article twelve is a record-keeping or book-keeping. Town will vote to authorize selectmen on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any property acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Article thirteen, to see what date taxes will be due and set an interest rate for unpaid amounts. Selectmen recommend first half, October thirty-first, and second half to be due April thirtieth. All those in favor? Interest at seven percent. Okay. Article fourteen, see if town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on the beta taxes at seven percent for the fiscal year. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of town-owned pro, personal property with a value not to exceed thirty-five thousand. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to borrow from the, or appro. Right, or appropriate from undesigned fund balance, surplus as they deem advisable, and meet the unanticipated needs of the community that occur during the fiscal year. Selectmen recommend an amount not to, not over seventy-five thousand. All those in favor? Opposed? Article seventeen, see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen to transfer funds between appropriation accounts as long as the grant toll of all appropriations is not exceeded. Any such transfers to be approved only in a properly-called public meeting in the selectment. All those in favor?
How about the motions?
You don't need motions.
You don't need motions?
No, you don't need motions.
No seconds, nothing?
No. To see if the town will vote to authorize the use of town employees and/or town-owned equipment in independent contractors by the town for maintenance on private roads in special and certain circumstances where in the public's interest. And this is the usual article. All those in favor? Opposed? Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Title twenty-three MRSA subsection two nine five three, that orders of the municipal offices with respect to the closing of roads, the winter maintenance shall be a final determination. This is a new article we have in there?
This is a new one.
You wanna give us an explanation on that, Tom?
I think, yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Over this year, going to some classes, I was informed, this is an article that every town should put in if there is any chance at all that we have to close a road for winter maintenance. This winter, we did. Short time, but we did. So I, I think it's probably prudent to put it in there.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector and treasurer to accept prepayments and taxes not yet committed pursuant to Title thirty-six MRSA subsection five oh six. All those in favor? To see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars from the tax increment of the pipeline Route three oh two, TIF, for fiscal year two thousand fourteen. Projects proposed in the tax increment financing district development program. Examples are Raymond Casco historical, Raymond Waterways. All those in favor? Opposed? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate five hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the administration account. All those in favor? Opposed? See if town will vote to appropriate, raise and appropriate fifty-one thousand, nine hundred, ninety-eight dollars for the assessing account. All those in favor? Opposed? To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars for the town hall account. All in favor? Opposed? See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate four hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the insurance account. All those in favor? Opposed? See if town will vote to rose, raise and appropriate six thousand dollars for the general assistance account. All in favor? Opposed? See if town will vote to raise and appropriate one hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for the technology department account. All those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
We had email traffic today. asking about technology. CIP, I guess I thought it was. It was not included in our discussion. Nobody made a presentation to us about it. But there is a sheet in the back of our technology packet that, that talks about a wish list. And we, we have not really discussed it. And based on the email traffic today, I thought I ought to at least bring it up. Anybody have any? Any comments? I'm looking for the sheet here.
Don't email me Lori.
So, in our, in our presentation, there was a capital item summary sheet. And unfortunately, that capital item summary sheet, I thought was a wish list. But it was never included in our budget discussions. It wasn't included in a budget, budget presentation. I asked the question back during the presentation to the budget committee and it is, you know, there's a for the broadcast studio, it's talking about the, some of the equipment upgrades. And, and it's not included. The only thing that was on, included was the generator, which came through in the, in the bond request. I think I'd be hard pressed at this point without a presentation to add it to the budget, but I did want to bring it up and...
I think the, the issue there was, we had a meeting, Nancy, Lori Forbes and I had a meeting and I guess there was not a clear meeting of the minds on, on that issue. We misinterpreted what it was she wanted to do and so we did not include that in the operation budget or, or the, or the capital budget. So, maybe it was the misnomer of the, the way it was titled, perhaps. I don't know, but, so it is correct that we did not bring that to you. And that's not part of the budget. And it's also correct that, in their view, that some of those things are needed items, but, you know, we were, sometimes things happen and this was discovered at the eleventh and a half hour, so I don't know what the corrective action is at, at this point, if any. But that was additional spending they would have liked to have seen in what they're calling capital. And I know the email traffic today talked about, you know, the, the nature of the expenditures not being capital expenditures because of their short lifespan duration. So, there would probably more appropriately be operating expenditures, additional operating expenditures.
They are getting an extra thousand dollars in computer upgrades and technologies.
Yeah. We don't have backup equipment and it's, it's possible that if something goes, you know, we'll be forced to fix or, or buy something. Because the digital recording is part of what we do, I think, again, I, I look at this and it's, it's hard for me to figure out how to put it back in, but there may be, if the worry from the technology committee is something is running on its last leg and it could die, I think we just need to be aware that we may need to cancel meetings or reschedule meetings if, if we run into that situation, which I'm okay with. And then there may be, you know, a time to get something fixed. I also believe that at the eleventh hour, if something goes, this is one of those things that we may have to deal with, with contingency.
That's what I was gonna mention. That's the, that's the only corrective action that you'd have at this point. You know, you'd, you'd be running another year and have another year to think about what you wanted to do and for us to improve the process, I guess. But, you know, it was, it was a difficult process and, you know, I, I think what we have here is a, an issue where we have a volunteer committee and a, and a misunderstanding between the volunteer committee and the staff, frankly, and so I will accept responsibility for it, but, but they didn't want additional funding.
They, they do have a line item for computers upgrades, yeah.
I realize they wanted additional to that.
Right.
And so, so anyway, but the way you would deal with it, if you had a catastrophic failure of a piece of equipment, you know, and you wanted to continue, which you presume you would with digital broadcasting, you would come and make a presentation for contingency funding. If you had an emergency.
Any other comments? All those in favor? I, I am gonna be opposed to that article, just so you know, so it passes for the one. See if, if the town will vote to raise and appropriate ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars for the community development account. In favor? Opposed? See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars for fire rescue department account. All those in favor? Opposed? See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars for the animal control account. All those in favor? Opposed? See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty-one thousand dollars for the infrastructure account. All those in favor? Opposed? See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars for the public works account. All those in favor? Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to ro- raise and appropriate four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the solid waste account. All those in favor? Opposed? See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars for the cemetery's account. All those in favor? See if the town will vote to ra- raise and appropriate thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the parks and recreation account. Include the materials, maintenance, equipment, twenty-five hundred, contract services, sixty-eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, Raymond rattlers, sixteen hundred dollars, Raymond baseball, softball, a thousand, Agawam bowling, soccer, two thousand. All those in favor? Opposed? You're opposed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Still passes. Article thirty-sixth, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate forty thousand, five hundred dollars for the Raymond Millinger Library. All those in favor? Opposed? To see whether the ta- Article thirty-seven is to see whether the town will vote to carry forward any existing fund balance in the capital improvement account. All those in favor? Opposed? Article thirty-eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one million, two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the capital improvement account. Include the twenty-five thousand dollars for the generator and backup servers, a grant match for transportation enhancement project, a fire pod rehabilitation project, IRT, District One Site Distance Project, IRT, Plains Road pole barn, eighty thousand dollars, Valley Road Communications Tower, IRT, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and down payment for engine two replacement, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. People are gonna ask, that doesn't add up to one point two million.
No, no. Those are included in that.
Right. Right, so the, and that, this also includes a new...
All the, all the other capital improvement.
Right. Public Works, right? Six hundred thousand dollar pole barn, is that right? No?
No.
No. No. Includes the paving maintenance of two seventy-five.
Okay.
Bond payments.
Right. You're right. I got it.
Even though we, we list some, shouldn't we list them all if we're gonna list any?
Right.
That would be my, my advice.
Do you, do you want these broken out like this?
I, I think it'd be better to list them all.
List them all, so it adds up to what the number is, 'cause it's, it's gonna be a crush in the town meeting, for sure. Okay, so, we'll make that amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate six hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and three dollars for county tax. All those in favor?
So, why don't you go back?
To see if the town will vote to rate, to, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sub, total sum of one million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars from estimated non-properity tax revenues to reduce the property tax commitment, together with all categories of funds which may be available from the federal government and any other sources. All those in favor? Opposed?
I have a question.
Okay.
That's our revenues? I just, I don't, I don't have the new...
That's non-properity tax revenues.
Right.
That includes the changes we made last night?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
The excise tax and...
Yep.
CEO fees.
Yeah. Thank you.
Article forty-one, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to accept or reject grants, donations, and/or gifts of money to the town of Raymond and to expend monies donated for specific purposes. All those in favor? Article forty-two. See if the town will vote to accept certain state funds as provided by the main state legislature during fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand fourteen, and any other funds provided by any other entity, including but not limited to revenue sharing and road assistance, emergency management, snowmobile registration, tree growth, general assistance, veterans exemption, state grant, or other funds. All those in favor? Article forty-three. To see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of two million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, eighty-seven dollars established in the town of Raymond in state law by five hundred thousand dollars for a total lev- levy limit of two million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, eighty-seven dollars. All those in favor?
Question?
Yeah. Well?
Should this be after the bond articles?
Money doesn't matter.
Well, if the bond articles don't pass...
It has no effect.
It has no effect on these.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor? Article forty-four. Shall the town approve a capital project bond at an estimated cost of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, six hundred thousand for a sand salt building, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollar replacement of engine two? Appropriate a sum not to exceed eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to fund the costs of this program, including the cost of issuance and the funds said appropriation. Authorize the treasurer and the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to en- issue general obligation securities of the town of Raymond, Maine, including temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof, and an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and the discretion to fix the dates, maturities, interest rates, denominations, calls for redemption, places of payment, form refunding, and other details of said securities, including execution and delivery of said securities on behalf of the town of Raymond, and to provide for the sale thereof as hereby delegated to the treasurer and the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
This is gonna need a different explanation, of course.
So, we have an explanation.
The explanation needs to be changed, though. I think we have the explanation from the road bond there.
Okay, yeah, so you need to make sure...
What happened, of course, we had just overnight to, to deal with.
Right.
So, that needs to be changed.
Yeah, so that whole explanation and recommendations needs to be corrected. All right?
Question?
Yeah.
This gets into one of the things you brought up in our workshop, Joe, about splitting.
Yep.
In a previous article, we put monies aside for the down payment.
Yep.
If that article were not to pass or to be split out, it could affect this article. If this article were not to pass, it would affect that article. So, if this article doesn't pass, would we adjust the previous article or just not expend the funds?
Well, you can try and go back and adjust it.
But I, I'm just, I'm just asking for, is it, 'cause it, it does get into what you were worried about last night with, with the split.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can try and scrape together the money to come up with the extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And where it comes from. Depending on which articles pass. Or you can, you know... Try to think now. I mean, it all depends what he still has in his capital improvement account. You know, whether it amounts to two hundred, you know, it, you can have a lot of different scenarios.
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, just bringing it up because we did split it and I wanna make sure that we're aware as we're voting on this that it is split. This is far narrower of scope than the previous article that had the deposit in it, so... Just, just a, a point. Okay.
I mean, there, there are different scenarios, you can run a bunch of them, so...
Mr. Chairman?
What, what, I'm not taking public comment at the moment? Yeah, so we, we need a new financial statement and an explanation. Based on what this is. Talked about total indebtedness to the town and all that stuff.
That's still, that's accurate.
That's the next one?
No, it's accurate, but just the explanation's not.
Okay.
And that's, gonna run into that with the next one as well.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor, Article forty-four? Opposed? Article forty-five. Shall the town approve a community park project at an estimated cost of seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars? Appropriate a sum not to exceed eight hundred and seventeen thousand to fund the costs of this program, including the cost of issuance. To fund said appropriation, authorize the treasurer and chairman of the Board of Selectmen to issue a general obligation security... To issue general obligation securities of the town of Raymond, Maine, including temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, and the discretion to fix the date, maturities, interest rates, denominations, calls for redemption, places of payment, form, refunding, and other details of said securities, including execution and delivery of said securities on behalf of the town of Raymond and to provide for the sale thereof, as hereby delegated to the treasurer and the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. All right, so we're gonna fix this explanation also.
I have a question or...
Yeah.
Maybe a thought on this thing. Going back to Article forty-two and the acceptance of various kinds of assistance, if we do these IP projects, would one be accepting a significant amount of, of federal military assistance? And so, that's, I don't see that as a category and it doesn't reference it in the articles?
Well, it says state grant or other funds.
You mean grant? You think that qualifies as a grant?
It qualifies as another fund.
Any other funds provided by any other entity.
Right.
I just wanna be sure, it's a significant amount of contribution. If you guys feel comfortable, then that's fine by me.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak now?
We're not taking public comment at the moment.
Excuse me.
You want one million dollars? That should be voted by the voters?
I said we're not taking public comment at the moment. So... All those in favor? Opposed?
I, I think this is something that the public should just decide on their own without, without a recommendation.
I'm fine with that, too.
Well...
I think because it's...
I think that it's, it's a lot of money, but it's a great opportunity.
Right.
I think it'll bring people to town.
Right.
There's so many things, but then on the other hand, it's a lot of money.
So, so what you're saying is the selectmen do not recommend?
That is what she's...
Not, not so much do not recommend, but take no position?
Yeah, just because I think, I think...
Sometimes people don't, it's not the right thing to do either, though. They, they look for us to take a position, one way or another.
Right, but this, this is so huge, this has to be the public's vote. And if we don't take a position, then I don't feel like we're... I know, like you just said, it's a great opportunity, it's a great opportunity, it's a lot of money, and I think that we should just let the people vote on it. That's my...
But the vote we just talked was to recommend.
I, yeah, I don't think we should recommend. I, not, oh, that doesn't make sense either. I think that we should not make a comment, either way.
Well, that's gonna result in a negative vote.
If that results in a negative vote, then that's how it is. But we did it on one before two, so...
So, right now, the selectmen are recommending this by a three to one vote. Does anybody... Does anybody wanna reconsider their actions on this? We're just gonna move ahead and recommend. I'm opposed.
And you are no position.
All right.
So first, the vote, three-to-one?
Three-to-one. Okay, that's all the articles. All right?
Yes.
I'll pass it back to the selectman, uh, chair, Mr. Gifford.
All I gotta do is find-
Hey, Jim?
Yeah, Jim. Here we go. Thank you very much, Joe.
I think, because I think that's what others should decide. I know, I'm a gout guard.
Yeah.
It's like making a school board decision.
Uh, next, under new business, consideration of dog warrant, please, can you speak to us on that? And if we could stop the conversation in the public sector. Do you have something to say? Can you step outside and say it?
Well, we tried to say it in public, but we, we weren't, we weren't allowed to.
We're not at the public-
Mr. Gifford.
We're not at the public counter.
Well, thank you. I have lots of friends here.
Well, then go talk to your friends outside. I'm sorry, Louise, go ahead.
About three years ago, the Department of Animal Welfare decided in a piece of legislation that they would no longer demand from towns a dog warrant. A dog warrant is a document that the selectmen sign every spring that notifies people that have not licensed their dogs to do so or be summoned to court. Because we have, like many towns, a great deal of trouble getting people to license their dogs, I would like to propose that the selectmen allow Raymond to re-initiate the dog warrant. Basically, what it does is make public the names of people that are delinquent, and allows us to go forth with pursuing them to have it done. As it stands right now, dogs are due to be licensed by the end of December. They are given a grace period the month of January, and as of the first of February, they are fined an extra twenty-five dollars per dog. Even this twenty-five dollar charge doesn't seem to stir a lot of people to get their dogs licensed. We're not talking about a lot of money. We're talking about for a neutered dog, six dollars, and for a non-neutered dog, eleven dollars. But for some reason, even with reminder cards, they don't seem to come in, because I guess it's not like a car which you have to drive and have registered. They just don't do anything about it. We have animal control officers, and they are on the telephone. We email, like I said, I send out reminder postcards, and still, I think we need one more possibility to get people to come in and license their dogs. So I would request that the selectmen allow us to do a dog warrant.
Thank you. Questions?
Might be a dumb question, but what's the necessity of having a dog licensed through the town? So you know that that house or home has a dog?
First of all, it's a statute. It's state law that we license our dogs.
Other than that?
What the money does is help support not only our local dog, animal control, dogs, cats, everything, but also the state animal welfare department, and also the state lab.
Wait for public comment.
I think it's an important thing for people to do. They don't seem to, in most cases, find it too drastic a measure. It ensures that every dog in your town has a rabies shot. Rabies is a terrible disease, and it is something, if a person gets, is not only very expensive to mediate with a doctor, injections, but also it's deadly. It can kill you, and it also can be transferred from wild animals to domestic animals. Almost any, not all, but almost any red-blooded mammal can get rabies, including us. And so this is the state's way of making sure that a, a human health risk can be controlled to some extent. All of us that have pets in the house are all liable, just saliva from the animal that will give you rabies. So it doesn't mean your dog has to bite you, or your cat scratch you. Just having the saliva on their coats can give it to you. So consequently, anytime it gets into a person's bloodstream, you're, you're at risk. So basically, for me, personally, to get people to come in and show the town that they've had their animals vaccinated is a big deal.
So Louise, your thought is this animal control officer, when we have a list of, of animals in town, maybe from previous years where they registered the dog, and, and maybe not the following year? If, if we don't see the dog registered, we go and knock on their door, and-
We do. Start with a telephone call.
Okay.
And previous to that, a postcard.
Okay.
And they do. They've come to my house, and I've paid that twenty-five dollars, and I'm like, hate paying that thing, but now I pay on time now, so.
The warrant, it's, uh, proposed warrant's right in the- in the packet. Has everybody had a chance to look at the proposed warrant?
Basically, what this vote is gonna do is to allow us to do it. Doesn't necessarily mean we will do it. We, it's, it's up, I guess, to the town clerk as to, as to whether you go forward if you give permission, 'cause it would be until you, it would be in perpetuity until you decided you didn't wanna do a dog warrant anymore. And you would take another vote to do away with it.
Any other questions?
Yes, one more.
Sure.
When you wrote, when you wrote that, did you use a different towns?
When I wrote what?
There's an article written for it.
Under the state law, it was-
Right, and, but, so you just took it from the law books?
Under-
To write it?
Title seven.
Maybe, I just wanted to make sure what we have is straight from the law, or is there portions of it that is-
No, no.
Our opinions or anything to that effect, so it's pretty much covering our basis?
Yeah, ba- basically, I took it from the state's law, having to do with, with the warrants which they rescinded.
Thank you.
Okay. Teresa, any questions? Do we wanna take a vote on that?
Yeah, public comment.
Well, public comment, yes. Okay, public comment, the southern.
Julie Sartland, Letchell Road, in Raymond. I think it's a good idea about the warrant, but it's hard for a lot of the people that- Raymond only held one rabies clinics, and the rabies, a lot of people are having a hard time with finances. A lot of them have been laid off, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of the vets have been trying to work with animal owners about getting rabies and other shots, distemper and things, because rabies has increased from like twenty-seven cases per year to over fifty cases a year. So it is extremely important to have the rabies shots done, but a lot of the people, residents in the town, have gotten cut back on hours. Finances have been kinda tough. It's understandable, you know, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna be slow in doing it. But working with the residents and the animal owners will be helpful. We gotta treat all animal owners the same, no matter if they're not licensing their dogs, or if they've got illegal puppy mills going on. Same statutes still apply to everybody. Shots, licensing, kennel licensing, vet records, et cetera, et cetera. So working with the residents who are having a hard time, I think it's a good idea. But think of the numbers. Twenty-seven to over fifty now, cases per year of rabies.
Thank you.
So part of, I guess, my, my question to the situation is, should it be, should it be a donation at the time and not a necessity to pay? It's more of a necessity to know that the dog has been taken care of and given the shots. That's more of what we, or me, as an individual, would want, more than the, the revenue that, that comes in from it. In some cases, that may be the case. They may not register their dog because they don't have the money to register their dog.
The unfortunate part of state law.
To pay?
To pay.
To charge an amount?
Yes.
Cool.
Now, it's, I suppose it might be possible, and I have not discussed this with Mr. Willard at all, but possibly the community fund could help some people with this.
Why don't you outline the fees, so people understand what the licensing fee is?
Yeah, I think I said at the beginning, but it's, it's six dollars for a neutered dog and eleven dollars for a non-neutered dog.
So if it's six dollars or eleven dollars, and you're a dog owner, and it's a, it's a financial issue, that's a, that would be a hard one for me to accept. There's some expenses attendant to owning a dog, responsibilities attendant to owning an animal?
And the worst part of that probably is the cost, as Julie mentioned, of getting the dog vaccinated in the first place. We all know walking through a veterinarian's door is pretty expensive. So, yes, we do one clinic a year. Maybe it would be prudent to have more than one clinic, if we can find a veterinarian to do it. Because at that, it's only ten dollars per dog.
No office visit. No office visit.
Right. No, it's just, it's just, it's just a clinic.
Office visit, and then you have rabies shot, and tech shot, cost on top of it. If you offer another clinic to help out the residents, ask Keniston, Dr. Keniston, or ask Lake Region, or ask Norway. I know that they would jump on to help get the animals update on their rabies, because it is a serious situation in the state of Maine.
Well, it sounds, any other questions, any other comments from the public?
I'll make a motion to move forward at town meeting with the dog license warrant. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, excuse me.
Thank you.
Did you think it had to come to town meeting? It does not.
No.
No.
This, this doesn't come to town meeting. This is just a warrant that you are signing to allow it to happen at a particular selectman's meeting, as, as it appears on the agenda.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Then I withdraw that motion and make a motion that the selectmen adopt the warrant. Second.
All, all in favor? Done. Thank you very much, Louise.
Thank you.
But don't go too far. I think you're next, also. Uh, the next issue is consideration of ballot clerks and election moderator, warden and warden for June tenth, twenty-fourteen referendum. Your name is on that one, too.
You have a list in front of you of my precious ballot clerks, the people that do the work for me. And again, Lori Forbes has agreed to be warden moderator for our June tenth election.
What day is town meeting?
June tenth. A town meeting is June third.
Third.
June third. But that moderator will be elected that night for the election, because we need a warden. I've asked Lori to volunteer, and she has. So she would be elected as moderator, because it's also a town vote on that date.
Make a motion to accept the ballot clerk list as presented.
Second. That's a lot of ballot clerks.
I need about thirty-five to do an elec- an election.
Do you have, actually, obviously, you have equally divided between Democrats and Republicans, I see.
I hope.
We like it to lead a little bit in one direction. Anyway, any comments, questions, all in favor?
Okay, does that include Lori as warden?
Yes, includes-
Thank you.
Warden in that. Thank you very much. Next, tax-acquired property updates. Thank you for your patience. Hi, Sue.
Hi, Mike.
I'll start. Because I didn't have the information that you provided until today, I went through all of these properties and actually made a spreadsheet myself to try to understand what you explained to us. I have questions. The payment plan that's outlined in this spreadsheet is in addition to paying yearly taxes on time?
Well, it's, it's, um-
Is that your anticipation?
What I do is I take the amount of what, the year they foreclosed in, that amount, the amount of the year taxes, add those together, divide it by twelve, so they're paying two years in one year.
Right.
So it doesn't go on this year, because-
I understand.
We have to pay back taxes first.
Right. However, when I do some of this math, and I take it out five years on some of these payment schedules, if they're not making their existing payments at the same time, so in other words, you gotta make your monthly payments, and you gotta make your yearly payments, they're not gonna close that gap in five years on a lot of these.
There's only a few that they're not, and some of them, I know you're questioning, um, the third one down.
Correct.
Lot sixteen, lot sixty-one.
Correct.
That one is a very unusual situation. Her husband was in an accident, had, um, severe accident.
Right. I read your explanation, and I, and I understand what you did there, and I'm, I'm good with that. But let's go down, say, to, um, map fifty-five, lot three, Cox.
Yes.
Okay.
What we're doing with him is every so many months, we up the payment until he can get up to speed of eight hundred and something a month.
Because if he's not paying his yearly and his monthlies-
Right.
We, we're never gonna catch up.
He also, uh, see, the, the payment arrangement is a payment that he makes every single month. He also made a two thousand dollar payment whenever he gets extra money. But I can't make an arrangement that he does that every single time.
So if, if I asked you specifically if he's also making his yearly payments on top of his monthlies, is he?
In November, he paid two thousand, five hundred, fifty dollars and thirty-eight cents, which was the October payment.
Okay, and he continued his monthlies?
And he continued his monthlies.
My concern here for the board is that I couldn't tell from these numbers if it did include both the yearly and the monthly. Uh, I understand the extenuating circumstances on the third one down for, for Brant. So Sue, take me down to Louis. Right? We've got no-
Louis has called me. They all wait until the last possible minute.
Yep.
And he has made a payment arrangement of fifty dollars to start, and then in six months, we're gonna look at it again and try to go up to a hundred.
Okay. More?
I have no clue where she is.
Okay. Page two. You don't know where Ruddball is?
No.
What about Square Realty? Anything new on them?
Nope, their mail comes back to me, too.
Okay. Thor, or Thorn? Thor or Thorn?
Thorn called me as a matter of fact today. He's upping his payment for both of them up to five hundred, and then we'll look at it again in six months.
Five hundred dollars each?
No, five hundred for the two of them. And, um...
That's not enough.
The second one is up for sale, but...
That's not enough.
Okay.
I mean, that's...
Hold on. I'm thinking we, I, I can't remember what the tax-acquired policy says.
It says five years.
Five, yeah, five years to pay it?
To catch it up.
To catch it up as long as you're being current, right?
Correct.
None of these folks are being current. That's, that's my issue.
Well, that's my, that was my question on if they're making their payments and they're making their yearlies, then they're current. If anybody is not current on making their payments, they get a thirty-day notice. I mean, that would be our policy.
What they're doing is paying two years in one, which would count for that, the current year.
I, I know.
But a lot of these payments don't get you caught up to that point.
And that's, these are the ones I'm asking specifically on Joe is, is, right. So Thorn?
Thorn, we've been looking at it every six months, and, and he's been doubling his payments every six months.
We're, we're on a, we're on a fifteen-year plan right now.
And then when the sale of that small piece goes in, he's paying them all off.
He's got thirty days. I mean, that would be my, I mean, he's, he's so far behind, how long do you work with him? It's oh, oh eight, oh nine. We're in fourteen. I don't care how nice he is. I mean, at some point, you draw the line.
But if you say you have sixty months to repay it, right?
But he hasn't, he hasn't even come close. So until he gets his payment up, I mean, that's what you're, that's what you're asking him to do, is increase his payment to a payment that would have gotten him sixty months, but he's at, you know, we've let it slide this long. It's not about sporadic payments, it's about a plan that, you know, it's, it's a piece of land that he owns that's valued at hundreds of thousands of dollars and, and, you know, he's twenty-four thousand dollars in the rears in his taxes.
There's a lot of those.
I know. But, but a lot of those are on a plan that will, will get them caught up in five years.
Are all these people on a plan, except the ones that say no?
Yes.
Right.
So, I mean, that one is the one that really just screams. And where it's just land, again, you know, he's, you know, that, is that five hundred bucks gonna catch him up? Because he, he didn't get to the twenty-four number by paying his six thousand dollar a year taxes, excuse me, his forty-five hundred dollar a year taxes and his payments. He's been falling further and further behind each, each year. So, I mean, that, that's what part of this policy is about. And he's got two properties. Both of them have been in default since oh eight, oh nine.
Well, I mean, yeah, you look at some of these deep cove shore properties, those are oh eight, oh nine.
Yep, but they're on a, they're actually now on a plan that will pay them off within that five years. I did a, I did a spreadsheet on all of these. So as long as, what Sue was saying is that they're paying their current taxes on time and they're making their payments, if they're doing both, then everybody will catch up except for the ones that we've talked about so far. And I think, Sue, you noted that in these, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if you know, if, if you go to the paper that's on your desk, Joe, the deep cove shores, there are three properties. They'll be paid off in thirty-eight, fifty-five, and nineteen months. So if we look at the policy as of today, they are on schedule as long as they're also making their yearly payments at the same time.
That one is also refinancing to pay up.
Right. So if I keep, if I keep going down the list and we get to the Val Enterprises, I went on, I went online and looked at them. They made miniscule payments last fall.
They wait until the last minute and then pay.
So they get a thirty day...
And this year.
They get a thirty-day notice, like our policy says. And then if they're not paid in thirty days, we ask the Conservation Commission if they have value of that land.
Yeah, I've never, I sent him, you know, I sent a lot of these a special letter saying, please call me, please make an, you know, payment arrangement, and I never heard from him.
All right, so the, the last one I have, which I also know is odd, is the Reed, Callow, Jacks.
Yeah.
How long do we babysit them?
I've been talking to Reed.
I know. I know.
It's in the mail constantly.
Do they make monthly payments?
He, uh, Callow comes in, he's a fisherman, so he comes in once or twice a year and makes three thousand dollars.
So he doesn't, he doesn't make monthly payments?
He does not make monthly payments.
And they don't pay their yearly, so he gets a thirty day. So, so here's what I would propose, just because I spent a couple hours on this today. Cox, Lewis, Moore, Reed, Ruball, Square, Thorn times two, and Val, all get thirty-day notices. And if they're not on a budget plan with a down payment in thirty days, then we go to the next step of our, because that's our next step on our, on our policy, and then we go to the, the step...
So they ha, they have thirty days to make?
To make their first payment and set up a plan.
Okay.
And if not, then those properties move on to the next step of our plan, which is to ask the Conservation Commission if they're interested.
Can you say those again, though, which ones?
I can.
They're all the ones that say no.
No, it's, it's more than that. No, it's more than that, Joe.
Okay.
So Cox...
Lewis.
Lewis. Moore. Reed.
Rudball.
Rudball. I'm trying to letter write. Square.
And Thorn.
Thorn and Val. Okay?
Yeah.
Now, here's where I have a question for the board. If these folks do not come up with their plan in the thirty days, which is our policy, and make their first payment and treat Sue nicely, then I think the only ones we send to the Conservation Commission are the land parcels, not the residential parcels. And then I think we have to have another discussion about the residential parcels. Because historically, we've given the residentials a little more leeway than the land.
We should.
Right. But, but I think the thirty-day letter with expectation that, and then we'll have to have another discussion after that thirty days. So that's, that's...
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Sue.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, we're now at public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on issue? Richard, yes?
Charles, level fourteen, Levitt Road. I've just recently returned from hiking in Yosemite Big Sur in the Kings Mountains Range in Northern California, and I want to state unequivocally that, gosh darn it, Raymond Maine is not one of the most beautiful places in the world. I would like the board to consider a commendation for the town manager. At last night's Board of Selectmen's Budget Workshop Meeting, the ongoing quest for honesty and transparency in Raymond government was described as, I paraphrase, microscopic analytical sharpshooting. And we all thank you for that high praise. We at the Raymond Committee of Correspondence call it due diligence and sometimes shooting fish in a barrel. Our motto is, "From behind every stone wall and every tree." I would also like to request the board to send commendations to the planning board for its just, reasonable, and legal decision to deny the Town of Fry Island Corporation, Town of Fry Islands Corporation Parkinside project on Raymond Cape. This is currently possibly the most clean and community-oriented board in the town. The board should also consider a special town meeting to, to implement a parking area moratorium in the shoreline zone so that we can try to clear up the mess created by the Town of Fry Island Corporation, our town planner, and our legal counsel. The new shoreline parking ordinance should be rejected. The issue of system, systemic corruption beha, corrupt behavior of the town administration is recently documented.
So Chair, this is out of order.
This is...
This is a personal attack.
This is just general comments.
This is a personal attack.
Yeah. In the nomination papers scandal should be further investigated. There should be an executive session called. The most recent Board of Selectmen, Boards of Selectmen have used executive sessions to intimidate and threaten fellow selectmen for years, and to suggest otherwise would have to be lying, you would have to be on drugs, or maybe you should be on drugs.
Or maybe you are on drugs.
Because this has been used extensively in the past. So those are my three recommendations for tonight. Thank you.
Step down, please. Another public comment.
Yes, Marshall. Marshall Bullock, Stone Wall Crossing. In the budget meeting that's coming up shortly, I think that I would be prepared to ask a couple of questions about tonight. One is the laundry list that I saw on the technology position. I think that somebody should prioritize those items on that list. And the other one is on the bonds. Last night, we talked about a possible bond anticipation note, and I think there should be, if we do consider that, there should be an interest figure plugged in for that anticipation note before the actual bond is drawn down. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other public comment? Now we're into selectman comment. Yes, Mike?
I have a note here from Sally at the library. There's new carpet and new tile in the library now. They actually got it done. I can't imagine what the chore was to move all those books to one side, tear up the carpet, put the carpet down, tear all, move it all to the other side. But anyway, they have new carpet and tile, and this is thanks to an anonymous donor who paid for all of it, which is wonderful. And there's also new hours at the library starting May first. The new hours will be Sunday, ten to four. So that's, that's a change down to four o'clock on Sundays rather than seven. Mondays, ten to six. Wednesdays, ten to six. And a new af, uh, new afternoon altogether, which are, which is Thursdays, two to seven. So again, Sunday, ten to four, Monday, ten to six, Wednesday, ten to six, and Thursday, two to seven. And the library also wanted to remind everybody that there still is a capital campaign and they're, they're approaching their goal for this year, but they haven't quite make it, made it. So if anybody can help with the capital campaign, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Any other select board comment? All right, now we move to town manager report.
We have to confirm the date of the next meetings, but I'm, I'm not sure now we're going to, we still need the April twenty-second meeting?
They have to sign and finalize.
Sign and finalize, okay. So I guess we have a meeting, and that will be the day after now, the rescheduled Budget Committee meeting as of today? So the Budget Committee meeting that would have been next Monday has been pushed by, by one week?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Well, we'll have that on the website. I think that's still in play.
I think it's still, so...
That's been changed again? What's the latest?
That school vacation, a couple members will not be able to make it, so I don't think that's been thrown up yet.
Okay, so when we get additional information on the finalization of the Budget Committee meeting, we'll get that out.
But it's definitely not next Monday.
No, it is not.
So I could delete that from my calendar.
Hopefully, it'll be next week, but not, not the twenty-first.
Okay, so, and somebody will communicate that to Louise, or Louise knows that?
It's Rolf, though.
Okay. All right, so...
Marshall, do you think the twenty-second is safe for us?
I think it's...
Tentatively?
I can't speak for Rolf. If it was me, I'd back it off to the seventeenth or eighteenth, if the space available, I'm sure.
No, no, you're saying our meeting?
Our, our meeting.
I, again, I can't speak for Rolf, but I would say the twenty-second, would you say?
So tenant, so we can just, Louise?
The last I emailed with Rolf was I cautioned him to try and get it in as soon as possible because of printing. And so he was gonna do his best to try and get it in before the twenty-first if he could.
Okay, so we're gonna go with the April twenty-second meeting for the consideration signing of the warrant, and then your regular meeting on the thirteenth? All good?
Yeah. I, I won't be here, I'm May fifteenth.
Okay.
Do you wanna, still go with that? Yeah, I wouldn't go with that.
Okay, so that's, that's all set. The Town and Alliance Clubs scholarship applications are available. Details are on the website. I want to remind folks that nomination papers are available. They're due back on April twenty-fifth. Selectmen, two, three-year terms. RSU fourteen, board member, one, three-year term. Budget Finance Committee, three, three-year terms, one, two-year term, one, one-year term. Absentee voting begins on May ninth. You can see the town clerk or go online to apply. The final thing is just a, a correction the chief wanted me to make from last evening. There was a, an incorrect statement made by a member of the Budget Finance Committee that the vehicle replacement was not outlined in the capital improvement plan. It is outlined, and the, the dollar figure is quite clear, and we're well below that. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, can I add to Don's?
Sure, yes.
Can I do that? Can I add to Don's?
Yeah.
We have a tentative date scheduled for a public hearing on the Egypt Road Recreational Fields, now that this board has moved it forward. There's a tentative date, and it will be on, I think, the agenda, our agenda, when we meet, I would assume we'll put it on the one for the twenty-second to approve, to set up the, the public hearing for Thursday, the twenty-second of May.
We could, we could set that up this evening if that's what you want to do, too.
Well, no, I think we just ought to put it on the agenda for the twenty-second. I just wanted to throw it out there as a tentative date to be approved later.
Okay.
So it'll be a public hearing on the rec fields on May twenty-second.
Thank you.
Anything else? Fiscal warrants.
I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll expense summary dated four, eight, two thousand fourteen for the amount of forty-three thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
I'd also like to make a motion to accept treasurer's warrant dated four, eight, two thousand fourteen for the amount of seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn, submit.
Second.
All in favor? Don O'Donnell?